I follow the meeting to order at 4:03. All right, to start off, announcements. I just have one announcement. We had our, the play in March. We had three longtime play members retire unfortunately. So for anyone that's seen one of these plays before, they're phenomenal. So I just said I want to thank, in the bottom of my heart, all of the work for Lynn Walker, Kim Kemp, and for Spencer. Thank you to the three of them, for myself and the board. Amazing work. Financials.
So I did bring the amendments there, right? Just to be my two signees. And in your board pack was the financial for the month. The actual type of expenses go down by $23,470. A large part of that was due to the changes to the special transportation, as well as food services always several months behind in reimbursement. So as we receive more information from the state on the reimbursement for food service, we're now not projecting food service losses this year. We also had the site services that were centered by KDA that sent off to any other additional cost to this quarter. Do you guys have any questions already? I do not. Okay, perfect. And I'm hoping we have had a little bit of female revenue coming down. Fortunately, the female money is not coming as quickly as we were.
Thank you, Molly. Office report, Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The majority of our report, as you know, we have a joint board meeting coming up on Monday, the 18th. We have a pretty comprehensive report that we put out against all of our boards to allow that to serve as our board report for the month. In that report, we're also going to be using a representative from Alma to do a presentation on our future dashboard that we've been working on as part of one of our goals, to kind of report out on the balance sheet part and show a lot of the information that people have been asking for. So there'll be a live demonstration of our own data that we need. I also would highlight some of the work that we've been doing in the community relative to the Tuck Learning Campus as a whole, because I think that relates to every one of our districts that is into cooperative schools, cooperative school district owners to talk around campus. We had a study done on the facility in 2019, which came back with a very sizable price tag to bring it up to acceptable standards, appropriate standards relative to age back mechanicals, roof, infrastructure, things along those lines. That was about $27.5 million for that entire campus. That was three years ago. So we've got an advisory group working together to make some recommendations to the Cooperative School Board. The first recommendation that this group has made is simply to ask our architects to do a study on the Tuck building, which is that historic building for our high school, that single standing structure, as you drive into the SAU office area, to see if the SAU offices could be moved from where we are now in that first floor of the old high school into the Tuck building to free up space. And then what would we do with that space? So that was an $8,500 request made of the Cooperative School Board that granted that. So we're there presently, where our architect is doing some, an architectural study for feasibility of moving 19 SAU staff members into that one building. That doesn't mean that there's anything that's going to happen. That certainly doesn't mean that that's going to happen. So what we're trying to do is ensure our public that all we're doing is looking at some possibilities on how we can use that campus. Members of this advisory group do include a realtor town, the town manager, Russ Dean. We've had a planning director from the town of Exeter, Doug Eastman served with us as well. Meridian Construction is on this advisory group. We have Lloyd Moore Stepp, who is the trustee of the Great Bay Charter School as part of this group, Bob Hall, and Paul Bauer, both former on the Cooperative School Board. Rusty Lister is naturally. We also have Jake Kleindl, who is the former facilities director, who is our co-able works over in the CMS renewal project. And we've had visits from the architects as well. So right now, it's just a lot of conversation of what if, right? We're looking at perhaps multi-use. Maybe the town is interested in using some of the space, freeing up some of the financial burden. One thing we need to all know for certain is we're not going to ask any of our taxpayers to fund a $27.5 million renovation of an administrative office building. And so that's why this group is in the very beginning stages of discussing what we're going to be moving forward. The remainder of our report really is more interactive with a number of our SAU office administrators, and they're going to be sharing all this information at our board meeting on the 18th, which is next Monday. I do however, as part of my report, want to request and make the nomination to this board for the renomination of our 18 certified employees here in the East Kingston Elementary School District. Each year, we're asked by statute to nominate our certified staff for renomination, and the board would either approve or not approve the nomination of individuals or all staff, at which point we would then need to move it in a public session and discuss those staff members that this board would not want to move forward. So I would hope that we'd be able to take some action on this at that time.
All right, so I'm taking a motion to approve the, what's we have? Personnel nominations. I'd like to make a motion to approve that personnel nominations. All second? Any special questions? Nope? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. We do have the contracts. We appear not able to sign those based on time today. I'm going to leave them with Mr. French, that you could come by in the morning perhaps and sign, because we'd like to distribute those to staff.
I can come in the morning and sign.
Excellent. Thank you. That concludes our report for this evening.
Thank you. All right, moving on to a couple of minutes. We have January 12th and February 9th. With Andy not present, we're going to continue to table those minutes. So our March 9th volunteering minutes? Do you have any volunteering minutes?
Yes. I have some edits. So under the SAU 16 office report, I had Ms. Gabriel ask, could the board see the surveys ahead of time? And Dr. Ryan responded, sure, those would be shared, and that would be shared with all boards? So that wasn't included there. And then under Principal's report, I have, this is favorite, asked when would the results take in for the national assessment of education, educational progress? And Mr. French responded to have the answer at the next meeting. So that would be in place of, what was that there? And that's all I see.
Okay. And the only other changes I've had, there was just a, there was a handful of misspellings. Tiffany's last name, Andy's last name. And there's also, who did the announcements in section 82? It was Mr. Harron that made the motion to nominate myself as the chair. So we just make those modifications and, do you want to make a motion to approve?
Oh, yeah. I need a motion to approve the minutes modified for the Wednesday, March 9th meeting.
All second? All those in favor?
Aye.
So we'll capture that on the video, so we'll make sure Kay doesn't make those corrections.
Okay. And I didn't know all the different spellings, but she can find them.
She spelled yours correctly, Helen.
She did, that's easier. Okay. Principal, turn it on.
Thank you. So a couple, a couple items that I would like the board to address tonight would be, I notified our parents, but I just want to get your approval for that tonight would be changing the May 12th early release to May 13th, due to some scheduling issues with our fifth graders spending over Alamoa. So our parents have been notified already of that change, but just for your approval from the board, I'd love it if we could do that tonight.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to change that early release from the May 12th to May 13th. And I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we're also working with the other SAU elementary schools, are doing our best to try to schedule the early release dates, so we can do more SAU's TPD. And I have those 22, 23 year early release dates for approval tonight would be September 22nd, 2022, October 20th, 2022, December 23rd, 2022, January 12th, 2023, February 9th, 2023, April 13th, 2023, May 11th, 2023, and June 13th, 2023.
Is that June 13th, that's the last day?
That will be the last due date, yes.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve those, those days for next year. And did you say those were professional development days or half days?
They have early release days.
Early release days?
Yep, so some of them will be PD, some of them will be for conferences.
Okay, so I'll second your motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our enrollment numbers, as of 4/8/22, kindergarten, we have 28. First grade, we have 11. Second grade, we have 22. Third grade, we have 19. Fourth grade, we have 28. Fifth grade, we have 27, for a total of 135. And continuing to look at our protections for next year's kindergarten, we are now at 17 registrations, so I think we're up one from last month. Our fifth graders, we are, we just had a final planning meeting today for our week over at Alamoa, which will be May 9th through 12th. Parents will be receiving the last bit of information from all four schools participating the Monday we return back from paper break. Our national state assessment dates, we started last week, continuing this week with the LA, and then both third and fourth and fifth grade. We just, just today, or last night, changed our math, the LA, or sorry, our math testing for fifth grade into next week instead of in May. And based on our fifth graders and what they're doing now, our teachers felt it was best to just continue the route of testing, and we didn't want them to have to come back from a break and take it right away. So next week, our fifth graders will be taking their math state assessments, and our third and fourth grade are the second week back in May. And I also wanted to recognize our students and those staff members who participated in Beauty of the Beast, and I'm just going to highlight our staff members for the hours and hours and hours they put in to make this an amazing performance. Mr. Benson, Mrs. George, and Mr. George, and Ms. Cody, Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Jellino, and Mr. Kay, our music teacher, Mrs. Kemp, and Mrs. Walker, for, again, their determination to put on a great show for those who watched this absolutely amazing performance. I also wanted to just highlight some of our progress we made this year. I know, I know Mr. Harron has asked a couple of times about data, and we really didn't have the data at, you know, at those, at those meetings. We do have the updated data for our math IREDS scores. Our students in first and fifth grade took their winter diagnostic, oh, I'm sorry, their fall diagnostic in September and/or October, depending on grade levels, and then again in January. And I really want to focus on the grade, as the grade is showing the progress of our students, and every single student, every single grade is making progress throughout the school. It's a little blurry in there. So just looking as a school, we are 36% proficient in, in math, schoolwide. In, in September, we were at 16%. If you go down to specific grade levels, our first graders, back in that first window in the fall, we did not have any students at, at grade level. It's the first time they've ever seen this assessment in the first grade, the first time they're taking on computers. So there is expectation of them to really not understand how it really works. But we do show a 20% increase for our first graders under the proficiency scale. Our second graders in the fall were 5% proficient, or at grade level, and in the, I'm sorry, 15%, and in the winter, our, our second graders were up to 33% grade level. Our third graders in the fall were at 17% and jumped up to 33% for the winter diagnostic. Our fourth graders in the fall at 18% proficient, and in the winter, at 36%. And then our fifth grade students started out the year at 90% proficient and have jumped up to 48% proficient. So we are excited at the growth we're seeing, and we're expecting this growth to continue, hopefully in the spring diagnostic, which will be participating in May. Again, we will see some significant growth from all of our students. So we're really happy to see more grade has been bump along throughout the year. Any questions on the math?
When did you, what month did you say these results were come?
Depending on the grade level, they, they were taken at, in the September, early end of fall, and then again in January.
Okay. All right, thank you. Well, I think this is great, and I would love to see this up a little closer. Maybe it didn't go well.
Sure.
But I think it does show that the kids are making progress, and I like to take those feedbacks.
I also asked Mrs. Schuster, who's our reading specialist, if she could not be here to, she, she wanted to go over this with you tonight, but she cannot be here, to go over our, our reading data. We are currently using the font that's in our reading benchmarks, and, sorry, okay. So, taking a look at our whole school data for kindergarten, we started out the year with our students at the beginning of the year, all of our kindergarten students, 30 of them reading, meeting their reading benchmarks. And we did that, that winter benchmark again on the January timeframe, December-January timeframe, and 33 of our 34 kindergarten students are meeting their reading benchmarks. Looking at our first and second grade, initially using the PALS assessments that we use, first and second grade students, we had eight of them that at the beginning of the year were meeting their benchmark, and we went to nine for the winter benchmarks. First to fifth grade, 49, I'm sorry, 49 students were at, at grade level, meeting their benchmarks, with 28 approaching benchmark. And in the winter, 54 of our students were meeting their benchmarks, 25 approaching. And then the students, I know this is something that people are kind of wondering a lot with her, specific intervention students, so the students that she sees in kindergarten, three of them were, were, were meeting their benchmark after that first assessment, and in that, in that winter diagnostic, a benchmark, six, six of those students are now meeting their benchmarks in kindergarten. So out of the seven she sees, three of them bumped up to make it six, out of the seven are meeting their benchmarks. Same thing in the first and second grade students that she sees, in the fall, 8% on that first benchmark were, were meeting it, and now 10 of our students, I'm sorry, now, this was done in the winter, 10 of our students are now meeting their benchmarks, meeting the PALS assessment, and our 1/2s. And then third to fifth grade, the students she sees, 3 through 5. And this is definitely something we want to highlight, using our font that's in our benchmark for grades 3 through 5, our students are expected to gain at least one local level by mid-year. Five of those students in the year adventure blocks have made two or more levels growth by the mid-year, meaning that they are really closing that gap that they were experiencing early on in the year. So four of those students are, have exceeded one level growth, four of those students at two levels, and then we, one students, one student who made three plus levels of growth from the fall to the winter. So I, I'm excited because we are seeing growth in all of our students in math and reading, but it shows really, you know, how important that math intervention is going to be next year, just seeing the really small success that our students have had just in that short period of time, a three or four month timeframe of having that actually built some intervention and seeing the progress they're making with her. And our expectation is, you know, once we get into that math intervention as well, we're going to see it throughout our school, and those students are going to be receiving the interventions that they really need. So we're really excited about the progress we're making this year. Any questions on the meeting? And I wish she could be here to really go through this with you, because she, she's spent a lot of time working this together, and she can do a much better job of it than I am right now of really getting into the nitty gritty of it, and the, the strategies and the interventions that she uses with our students.
I just want to say thank you, and I think this shows academic growth, and I think as a board, that's what we're here to do for all students. And so I think this is a great method to see this, you know, kind of periodically updated. Yeah, thank you.
We will have the spring, our IREDS will be done again in, in May, after the SAS testing is done. All right, moving on, the last thing that I wanted to talk about, I didn't call it Melissa, it wasn't the gentleman, the foreign language team, or is it something that you wanted to add?
No, it's, you can.
Okay. So I have been talking to Dr. Ryan over the last few months about foreign language, and some of the feedback that we've been receiving from, from many of our families over the last few years, not just this year, but over the last few years of the topic of foreign language. We do have foreign language Spanish this year for our students in their fifth grade, and we've been seeing feedback throughout. Some of it good, but the majority of it, kind of why are we doing this, if there's something else our students could be doing. And the challenges for our foreign language teachers have been totally, just like anything else, some of it was done on a project, virtually. This year, our students are a person, and I am a firm believer in really starting foreign language at a young age. I came from the school in New York, where our students had Spanish starting in first grade, they had Spanish, or foreign language from first and 12th grade. And I saw firsthand, really starting them at the young age, what that can really do for students, and learning the language is a great introductory time for our students, and I'm a firm believer in that. So that being said, you know, I think based on the parent feedback and input that I've had over the last two years, you know, really got this conversation started with Dr. Ryan. At, at February timeframe, Mr. Benson, our PE tech teacher, informed us that he would like to move from full-time, what was his status, to pointing. When he dropped that bomb on us that he wanted to do that, it kind of gave us some possibilities of taking a harder look at bringing in, in a STEAM program here at school. I believe we're the only school in Alamoa that does not have a STEAM program here. And his, his, his going from full to part-time gave us some flexibility, potentially to bring STEAM into our building. At that point, I, I reached out to our chair, Melissa Lyons, to let her know that I was going to be seeking input from our families on foreign language and what their thoughts were about bringing a potential STEAM program to our building. The parents did respond, 49 families responded to the survey that was sent out. We just had a few different questions on there. First question was, do you support EKES developing a STEAM program, K through 5 in case of foreign language? And our 49 responses, 75.5% preferred STEAM here, EKES, 24.5% wanted to continue with foreign language. I also asked if people would be interested in foreign language becoming an after-school enrichment program, which one word language that we use right now does work at other schools after school for enrichment. So that is a possibility for our students, for families that want enrichment for foreign language, to possibly have the after-school foreign language program here. But I, I just wanted to add, 61% of our parents do not want enrichment after school, because it would be the cost to the families, it would be something to even be able to include in our budget, and 38.8% of our families would be interested in that. And then the rest was just looking for feedback from parents. A lot of feedback was similar feedback that I was receiving throughout the year about foreign language, but a lot of it was really pro STEAM and what that could do for our students here at school. So based on parent feedback, and based on just him being here in the building, I think we can bring in a, a two-day weekly STEAM program. I didn't mean with, with Molly O'Keefe to look at the numbers. It wouldn't, it wouldn't oversee our budget at all, based on the savings from, from Mr. Benson's salary, and his retirement, and his, his benefits, and taking into account the $19,000 plus dollars that we have geared towards the contracted one for our language. There wouldn't be any cost increase at all to bring in a, a veteran STEAM teacher, we would be able to do that. I don't remember what the steps were, I, if we figured out, but, you know, we wouldn't be bringing in like a bachelor's, we could bring in a really quality STEAM teacher to teach, you know, science, technology, and engineering back to all of our students here, K through 5.
Okay, just so our comments clear, just so everyone understands, Mr. Benson's position is a full-time position. He's going to be dropping to a .8, the .2 he's dropping is the tech portion. So he'll still keep his .8 in PE, but he's dropping his .2 in tech, which is only K through?
K through 2, K.
And there's currently no tech at 3 through 5?
Correct. Currently, right now, our, our teachers are, are doing the best they can with infusing STEAM and tech into their general curriculum, but really to put us on par with, with the rest of the country. I really think STEAM is, is probably the way to go, knowing, knowing that our role is a, is a technology and engineering, which we're open, and how important that, that subject area is. The STEAM teacher would be covering the competencies that he or she would be able to cover in the STEAM, and then the classroom teachers would cover the competencies that our students are not accessing in that STEAM, in that program.
Okay. And we did have a full-time STEAM position two years ago. Correct?
I don't know. Was it full-time? I don't know.
I think we have the person in the audience who's our full-time STEAM.
Was it full-time STEAM?
No, it was, there was a really 3rd class, so I was half, I was 3rd, and then half.
Okay, half and half. I just know that, yeah, that we had, you were coming into other classrooms and doing STEAM.
Yeah. I knew there was STEAM, I didn't know it was full-time.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So I would like to just see the financials on that, and the whole survey results. Just, yeah, I have a few more questions. I'll have the questions inside, and we'll do that in the future.
Survey results, I see.
Well, you know that. Yeah, you have a, you have a parent office, a back report, and then all these reports. I don't know how you get to that, but.
Was that the conclusion?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. All right, we're going to move to the chair's report. Superintendent Evaluation, let's see, we've met a few times. We met March 22nd to discuss the mid-year evaluation process, changes that we wanted to see based on what we did this year and what we might want to do in future years, and started the discussion of the year-end evaluation process. We welcomed some new members onto the committee, and we met again on April 11th, this past Monday, and we're meeting again tomorrow. So we're continuing to work on this process of aligning our review with the goals of the superintendent, and coming up with a comprehensive, memorable way of taking the data we have and putting the review together. So that work continues. Policy Committee, we met on March 24th. We are only putting forward one policy tonight for a first read. I will read that one through. As we've talked about it prior workings, we're not going to improve them on the first reading, we're going to do a reading, and then approval will happen at the next meeting. So the reason this policy, this is a policy that we don't currently have. So the reason this policy, this is a policy that we don't currently have, it's a result of the New Hampshire RSA 2048, Air Quality in Schools, which states that the school board of each school district should develop and implement a policy governing air quality issues in schools. The policy shall address methods of minimizing or eliminating emissions from buses, cars, delivery vehicles, maintenance vehicles, and other motorized vehicles used for transportation on school property, taking into account the state anti-idling and clean air zone policies established by the Department of Environmental Services. So that's the reason behind the policy. So new policy, EBBD, called Air Quality. In order to ensure that all schools have adequate air quality, the board directs the superintendent to address methods of minimizing or eliminating emissions from buses, cars, delivery vehicles, and other motorized vehicles. The superintendent will delegate the implementation of these methods to building administrators. In addition to addressing methods eliminating emissions, building administrators are directed to annually investigate air quality in their respective school buildings using a check was provided by the New Hampshire Department of Education. In support of this policy, the superintendent is authorized to establish regulations and/or administrative rules necessary to implement anti-idling and clean air measures aimed at improving indoor air quality, which will include drivers turning off their vehicle engines when parked to drop off or pick up students, bus providers and delivery vehicles following anti-idling procedures when loading and unloading. Exceptions may be made for extreme weather conditions which require idling for heating, mechanical purposes, or to ensure full functioning of safety lights and equipment. Weird that the light would go off right at the end. Okay, so that's the full policy, so that'll be on our agenda to move on at our next meeting. Since Andy is not here, we won't have an update on the news, but you are at the safety and security.
Yes.
So Andy won't go on a community engagement update. Yeah, but if you want to provide an update on safety and security. Oh, and our next policy meeting is tomorrow night. So I have two meetings tomorrow night at the same time, so like tonight, it's not my hand. So the update on safety and security, that wasn't a whole opportunity in East Kingston, but other than East Kingston has participated in active Alice drills. And also a takeaway that I had from that meeting was on equipment. So if there's any, you know, updated, any updated radios, you know, to reach out to the head of the security, safety and security. Okay, can you hear me now?
I can hear it.
Oh, sorry. So did you hear any of it, or was it just the last part?
No, I missed most.
Okay, so for East Kingston, they participated in active Alice drills. And a takeaway that I had for equipment was that to reach out to the safety and security head if we need updated radios. Like the teachers, they all have radios, so they just want to make sure that all of the equipment is good, it's working properly, and to reach out if we have any issues.
Something that I talked to Chief LaPage and Tiffany DeBrio afterwards was the lack of cell service in our school, which is a pretty serious safety concern. I think it's most people that have Verizon here, me included. There are tiny little spots in the school that I might find service, but for safety concerns of all of our students and staff, I would like to possibly over the summer entertain whatever, I forget what kind of device they call it, that we could...
Network at the center.
...to school that would provide that service, and work with the SEU, look at the cost for that.
I don't have anything on our old business or new business, so we're going to move to public input. Oh, well, I don't know if it'd necessarily be designed. So if you would like to speak, just form an early line, name and address, please direct your comments to myself, we're going to limit people to three minutes. And if you are asking questions, please be aware that we're not going to be answering questions right now, we'll be answering them before the next meeting. All right? Laura Shams.
Good evening. I was pleased to see the school board goals shining at the top of your agenda for this evening, but I was a little bit disappointed that none of the three goals that you mentioned have anything to do with educating, excuse me, are not directly related to the education of our children. I'm sure you're aware that the New Hampshire Department of Education has a policy and a regulation on duties of school boards, and I'd like to read just one, which is item G. In consultation with the superintendent and in accordance with the statutes and rules of the State Board of Education, determine the educational goals of the district, develop long-range plans, and identify measurable and attainable short-term objectives. The school board shall require the implementation of educational programs designed to reflect the goals and objectives. And further, the school board shall review such programs and make public the results of such investigation. And I want to ask the board, have you done that?
Okay, thank you, Ted. Mr. Branding?
William Branding, 16th Country Lane. I have talked before about the Health Trust Funds, and I wanted to thank the administration. They did send me a copy of a legal notice that was put in Seacoast Online. However, I'm extremely disappointed that the school district used Seacoast Online as a substitute for a regular newspaper. As a senior citizen, there are lots of senior citizens in this town that don't necessarily have a computer, if they do have a computer, they don't know how to use it. So unless the school district is going to pay to have a computer for everyone in town, pay for the internet connection, pay for training, this can't be used. It violates RSA 98. It's not a, Seacoast Online is not a newspaper. Dr. Ryan said at the last meeting that this was legally correct. I don't see how it can be legally correct. Dr. Ryan said he would get me the name of the attorney who said this was legally correct, and I've not received anything yet from the administration. So I'd like to get that information as soon as possible, and then follow up at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Thompson, 1 St. Field. Last time, Mr. French gave an update on the test scores and how those were calculated. And I think that the explanation he gave on how the test scores were calculated was different than what many of us understood, and that was brought up, and just curious if there's been a follow-up, if it's an explanation as to how the scores are calculated and what they mean.
Any other public comment? I was hoping to hear any public comment on potentially the STEAM or foreign language position from a parent, but, okay. We do have one, I did have one email that we can share.
Now, it's about, could you just briefly explain the STEAM? And if people were able to clarify, I was really annoyed. I find this strange, because the other thing that was strange was with the, when we did the budget, this was how it was presented, was that the psychologists wanted to increase our hours so that children get full benefits. And to me, if people are increasing their hours, it should be because it's of some use to the school, not just because they want to increase the benefits.
Okay, it's actually the opposite, just to clarify. Mr. Benson's moving from a full-time position with benefits and retirement to a .8 position.
No, I understand.
Okay, so he's just decided to drop the tech portion of his...
So that 2% doesn't mean anything. It's okay not to have it anymore.
Well, it's a .2 tech position that we would then be looking to fill, because we would want our K-2 kids to have tech. The question was whether that should be extended to be a .4 position, two days a week, to include tech in the STEAM position from 3 through 5 as well.
So it's actually more stuff that you're going to be hiring.
It's a one, I guess, one additional day. Yeah. Yeah. So instead of a one-day-per-week tech position, it would be a two-day...
What does tech position mean?
So it's, covers a lot of things. I'll let Brandon speak to it, because STEAM covers a large...
So this tech is part of STEAM, or...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, will you explain the acronym for it? I think it'd be good to cover that now.
Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. So our students would have a teacher here two days a week in place of one day a week of K-2 technology and one day a week of foreign language, so it would really equal out to two days that our students would be receiving STEAM.
Yeah. Could I ask, Mr. Tom, I hate to put you on the spot, would you mind coming up, just because I know that you were doing this when my son was in third grade and coming in and doing these lessons? It's very, it's important to the kids, but it's also very involved. So maybe you could just talk about kind of some of the projects you weren't done for.
It was a little different when I did it, because it wasn't like...
Is that on? Yeah, I can't...
It was a little different, so I didn't, it wasn't like a weekly special when I did it. It was, I would go into the classroom, so I did like fourth grade, third, fourth grade for like a chunk of time, into like a unit with them, and I did first and second grade for a chunk of time, kindergarten, whatever, kind of filled my schedule. I was always in the fifth grade room after science, so I was doing kind of stuff with them. And I would pick like units that they were working on and try to introduce like a STEM project that would help them better understand what they were doing, so it's a really hands-on science, that pushes them to really, I'm not giving the answer, sorry, but to use different materials, do things to really come to their own conclusion about how things work. So in third and fourth grade, I had to do two units in third and fourth grade, cool with them, but we did, like the start of the year, I would introduce them to a question and was how, what happened to the old band of them, did we do a bunch of different activities and things, and they, in the end, had to explain what happened to the old band of them, because it's about erosion, whether a chemical erosion, two years ago, exactly. And then third and fourth, I also did a unit on energy with them, so we would do different, you talked about potential energy, kinetic energy, electrical energy, we built like circuit boards, using paper clips, and yeah, put buzzers into them and make that all work, so we didn't understand it, but just we worked. We started second grade, we did, I think it was like Structures and Properties of Matter unit, so kind of understanding that everything in the world is made up of these little pieces, and then fifth grade got built into little pieces that we can't see. So we did different, talking about, you know, if you wanted to build a certain structure that stood tall, what kind of materials could be used, and different exploring, or if they had a design, dogs, that would like help the dogs survive, we had, that's different materials, we come up with a really good structure. Kindergarten, this force of motion unit, so we did like a bunch of different things to force emotion, and then they did a design like a marble maze kind of thing. We had to like set it up to the marble, and eventually call it the cup. So it's really, kind of give them the materials, and it's like they're bad at it already, but a lot of it is them exploring, kind of sharing what they've noticed, and building on what they learned, making some changes. Different, you do like a rocket activity where they design a rocket, where they have to hit a certain target, so they have to like modify that. But I don't, it obviously feels a little different because it's a weekly special, so the project, I guess, would just be spread out over a longer period of time.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Okay, I know Brandon was looking for us to take an action on the, on this, but I'm gonna, I'm not going to make a motion on it at this meeting, I'm going to wait till my, I would like to hear more input from, from parents. I know we did the survey, but the survey was clearly geared at one or the other, and I just want to make sure that we're moving in this direction, that that's, it's really what everybody wants to do. Would that be for like hiring purposes?
Yeah, yeah, just because we're in hiring season now.
I know.
And, you know, it's unfortunate that waiting until, you know, potentially then a major region to hire you, potentially be losing out on a really quality candidate, which is why, you know, I'd ask Melissa to possibly take action tonight, but I, I forget it then.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to see more information. I think Tiffany, I agree, we need to see the financials on it, I want to see the comparison between what the difference is between Mr. Benson's .2 and what this position would entail.
I'll also share with you kind of like a sample curriculum with that too, so you can see, you know, topics that you'd be covering.
Okay, yeah, that would be good. Thank you.
Hello, we're here, 1 St. Field. I think foreign language is a critical part of early education, and I would prefer that to stay in the curriculum. I'm actually really surprised about the survey results from the parents. I would say it was a little confusing, I thought we were choosing like one or the other, the way that it was presented. So I don't know if parents need, understanding that it would be together, two days a week. That's it.
Thank you.
I didn't give my name the first time I was here, it's definitely one time limits.
Thank you.
Melissa, if you're interested in getting more public input on Brandon's proposal, I would suggest that it would be good to get a written copy of what it is that you're proposing to do, and what the impact would be on finances and so forth. And if you could get that to us sometime before the next meeting, I, for one, will get you some input, okay?
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
East Illinois, 1 St. Woods. I just want to say, having another language and starting young is very, very important, so I'm definitely for that.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jen Durden from 128 Childs. I love both these ideas, really, like I love the idea of kids exploring the STEAM concepts in a very interactive and collaborative way, where they can kind of have trial and error. And I think that is just really important in terms of like thought process and confidence building, so I love, love that idea. I love the idea of, I just listen to my kids all day, they go languages with each other. So I think it's a great moment, you know, in these elementary years, for them to have some exposure to that. But, you know, I am not really familiar of kind of what was being offered in terms of foreign language, was it like a weekly activity, it was like once a week kind of a thing? So I was thinking about that when I was doing the survey too, because that's, that's great, because it's an introduction to it, but it would be wonderful if we could determine if it was an after-school activity for the foreign language, if it was offered in a way that was maybe more of like a series, so they would kind of get just a lot more practice with it, like three or four days a week or something. I think it can be frustrating to try to learn something like that, get hung up with it for a week, not having anyone to communicate with, and come back a week later. So something that might be more like a little blast with the language would be interesting. But I really, I like, you know, the STEAM concept is awesome, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I just want to note that our next meetings for May and June are both going to start at 4 o'clock, just so everybody has those time changes, and I will make a motion to adjourn at 4:52.